All right, I will call to order this meeting of the Lennox School Committee. Please note, this is being broadcast live on CTSB TV and will be rebroadcast there as well. We have an action-packed agenda for you this evening. I hope everybody's ready. First item is hearing of visitors. If there's any public comment? Public comment? All right. Correspondence, I don't believe we have anything there. And so on the board report, we have meeting minutes to approve.
I'll make motion to approve the meeting minutes as of September 23rd.
I'll second that.
Discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous? And we're already on to number five, the superintendent's report.
All right, the first thing is highlights and recognitions. And I would like to recognize Anne Feegel for two accommodations. One is the Certificate of Academic Excellence and the other is a commended student with the National Merit Scholarship. So if Anne would come up? Your hard work is noted and appreciated. Also, as a highlight, the DESI has a gifted and talented advisory council made up of educators from around the state in different positions. And our own principal and curriculum instruction and assessment coordinator Brenda Kelly has been appointed to be on that committee. We have, in addition, let's see, what I'd like to, neither one of these needed to be voted on, so I just mentioned them as highlights. Berkshire Mountain Bakery has donated about 60 pizza crusts for our upcoming PD in November. And we thank them very much. And Chris Messini from the Management Forester with the Central Berkshire District has donated wood to schools throughout Berkshire County but including ours. And we appreciate that for our program. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yes. We thought we were going to have a staffing update, but we do Cory and fingerprints and everyone, they just haven't come back yet. So once they're back, I will be able to officially speak to a new staff member, but don't have anything at this moment. I think Anne Marie Rodriguez has a student that you'd like to...
Sure, that's great, thank you.
Recognize?
So Anne Marie, I'm the Chair of World Languages.
Hope you'll just come up to the microphone? Sorry, Anne Marie.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for giving me a moment to speak. Is this okay?
Yep, perfect.
Anne Marie Rodriguez, Chair of World Languages, and really happy to have the opportunity to speak to you. I wanted to thank, personally, I wanted to thank the school committee because over the years, as a member of the World Languages Department, we've been very much supported in our many endeavors. And just a little over two years ago, I was in meetings with members of my department, can I just put this here for them?
Sure.
About ways that we could celebrate the awesomeness of our multi-language learners. And so I met with people at the Department of Ed and learned how to develop and implement the Seal of Biliteracy Program. And thanks to all of you and the support of Dr. Collins, we have a Seal of Biliteracy Program. We've had great success with the program. Our pilot year was '22 to '23, and we graduated three seniors with the Seal of Biliteracy, which was affixed to their diplomas in high school transcripts. Last year, we awarded seven high school seniors. And at that time, one of our high school juniors, who is now a high school senior, who is here tonight, Lily McDonald, if you'll come forward, has earned the Seal of Biliteracy. And so this will, you'll get another one of these at graduation. You earned this last year. You retain the highest level of proficiency. And so we have a few certificates here for you. I'm just going to give you this packet. Okay, great. This is from the school, from Dr. Ames and me, and then some information about the seal for you. Great, thank you so much. And congratulations. Congratulations. Yep, it's all right. Okay, I'll give this to you over there. All right, so is that good? Thank you so much.
Thank you. Congratulations.
About the New York City field trip?
So for those of you that don't know me, I'm Megan Porter. I'm the History Department Chair. And I've come to you seeking approval to take the juniors out of state to New York City. This is kind of the last phase of a multi-year overhaul of kind of the scope and sequence for field trips. Almost four or five years back, we switched our curriculum when the state split up U.S. History I and U.S. History II. So Lisa Westbuser and I, for a long time, were taking the juniors to Washington, D.C. But that trip really corresponds much more with the U.S. I curriculum, which is now in the sophomore year. So last year, I don't know if you remember, we took sophomores and juniors so that nobody missed out. And this is the final phase of now that trip is in the sophomore year and juniors are going, hopefully, to continue to go to New York City as it complements their curriculum much more so. So this year, this is the first we're doing it, we're hoping, we've arranged for a walking tour of Harlem, particularly targeting Harlem Renaissance, ending at the Apollo Theater, for example. Lunch in Harlem, and then Great Gatsby is on Broadway. Not every year we'll do Broadway, but this is too perfect because the kids have just finished reading Gatsby. So we're hoping for your permission and busing to take the students on that trip, aligning kind of perfectly with their fall curriculum. So that's my ask, I guess.
There any questions for?
Yeah, do you have any question? Did you all get this?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, so if you have any questions about...
This does require a vote, and it does have my recommendation.
I will move to approve the junior year trip, the junior class trip to New York City for study of the Harlem Renaissance and attendance in the show. And I want to know if you want anyone else to come with you? No, no, I'm just kidding. It was great.
Is that part of the motion?
No, it's not. Anyway, I will approve the field trip as proposed.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Sounds great.
Thank you very much. It looks awesome.
I love always your support. It's great, thank you.
Thank you for doing it. I'm going to hope for good weather.
Yeah, seriously.
All right, next is the, someone's going to speak regarding the Spanish trip.
I'm here to talk about the Spanish trip. The proposal seeks to approve for a 10-day trip to Madrid and Barcelona. It's aimed at enriching students' understanding of Spanish culture, history, and language through several guided tours, hands-on activities, museum visits, especially el Museo Nacional de Arte de Catalunya, and other immersive experiences. The trip is designed for 15 to 20 Spanish students in grades 11 and 12 and will be a learning experience that aligns with our curriculum and goals. First, the trip will gain students' cultural exposure and awareness. Students will be able to explore various cultural landmarks, art, and traditions of Spain. Second, language practice. Being in Spain allows us to practice our Spanish in real time and in real situations, which is nice. Third is historical context. Students will gain a better understanding of European history by visiting actual historical sites. I would say this trip is extra important because, especially last year, the trip to Guadalupe was canceled. The reason that we've come to this trip so late is because originally, it was thought that the French students would be taking their own trip this year, but there were too few French students for there to be a big enough impact in just their trip alone. And therefore, the school decided to add in the AP French students with the 11th and 12th grade Spanish and AP students. Much thought was put into this decision, and that is why we're a bit delayed. As for fundraising, we'll have more information on that very soon. We're holding a parent meeting where we're going to talk about the trip and who will be attending and fundraising. There will be possible independent fundraising, but we've already applied for a grant that will cover the cost of the tickets and transportation to the Museo Nacional de Arte de Catalunya. And we've also already been offered donations for raffles. I think this past one was for a sports game. So, thank you.
Thank you. It's great.
I heard.
Good job.
I especially appreciated the part when you explained that the reason we're delayed is because Dr. Ames gave it so much thought. It is a little, the timing is a little tricky, and I want to be clear on that. So Andrew Puy's done a wonderful job planning trips for students of French. There was a trip in the works to Guadalupe, some of you remember, last year, didn't go for various reasons. The number of students of French who would be able to travel this year or demonstrated interest is so small, it really wouldn't have, it would be prohibitively expensive and just not a valuable experience given the small number of students. There is a burgeoning group of students of French who will be seniors next year, and so she anticipates a large, successful trip next year. Rather than not travel at all, we thought it would be appropriate to propose a trip to Spain this year and offer it to the small number of students of French, there are three seniors who are studying French, offer them the opportunity to travel with students to Barcelona. We're coming at this a little bit late. We'd always like more time, but for that reason, we're not proposing to travel in February when some of these trips usually go. We're bumping it out to April, which will be complicated in its own way, but give families more time, students more time to prepare. But it is an exciting trip. I thank Ms. Klein for a lot of the work she's done, talking with different travel agencies and comparing prices and group packages, that sort of thing. I'm very satisfied with the option we've finally settled on. We're not meeting with parents until later this week. We didn't, we've spoken with students about the possibility of a trip, told them where we hope to travel, but we've made it clear that we really can't do anything formally until we come to the school committee. That's why we're here tonight.
Dr. Ames is donating his April vacation to be a chaperone.
My wife's coming with it, so.
Is there a minimum number you need for the trip to be?
The price we're looking at, the price we want to talk to parents about this week has us taking 15 to 20 students. That doesn't include the chaperones. So I would be traveling as a chaperone, Ms. Klein would be traveling as a chaperone. It's likely that we'll have at least one more adult, possibly a fourth, who's paying their own way to be part of the trip, but there is an extra resource.
This requires a vote as well? Because you're going out of the country.
I'll make motion to support the Spanish trip in April.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Well done, nice presentation.
Good answer.
Next to my report is the enrollment. We wait until October because the official enrollment that we give the state is timestamped on October 1st. So what I'll do is give you information, and if there's any specific questions that you have beyond that, please feel free to ask. So we ended last year at the Morris School with an enrollment of 335, and we begin this year with an enrollment of 332. Last year, the percentage of choice was 39%. This year, at Morris, it's 43%. We ended last year at LMHS with an enrollment of 443, and this year, we are, as of October 1st, a 440. Last year, choice was 41%, but this year, it is 43% there. The total enrollment is 772. Last year, it was 778. Last year, the total pre-K to 12 was 40.1% choice, and this year, it's 43.13% choice. Are there any other questions about breakdowns of grades?
Was there anything significant we noticed in the middle? I mean, we've got all the kids who graduate and all the kids who show up in kindergarten, and then the standard choice number, points of addition. Have there been other significant people coming in, people going out?
We did, we did accept a few more students. We had more students apply and accepted more students for tuition in from Richmond. And additionally, as always, we've gotten more, more people are interested in, more families are interested in having their students here than we have slots. So there's a lottery for every grade that has an opening.
Can I add something? So in school, June 24th, end of year school.
The state has, the state has a mechanism because they don't like to split children up. So if a sibling has already been accepted through choice, then their sibling applying moves to the head of the line. And if there are more siblings and there are spaces, there's a separate sibling lottery first. And we did, we were able to accommodate several siblings.
But it looks like our, do you know if we had a pre-K waitlist or if we were able to?
This year, I think we do, do we still have anybody on waitlist for pre-K?
We only have anybody that's now prospective. So they, after the round of any...
Yeah, so everyone as of the summer who was looking for a spot was able to...
Anybody we called and followed up on, we filled, and anybody who was lingering after that is then considered prospective parents, and they usually then go on to the next lottery if they're still interested. After, also, we put together the census, which will happen shortly. Any other questions?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Next, if you would queue up Jeremiah's presentation. We have the two school improvement plan presentations, one for middle high school, which will go
The blank screen represents the children when they come to us. Okay, there it is. This is, this presentation is taken directly from the full document that I believe you all have. I may actually skip some of the action steps and go right to the deliverables, but let's start with just a quick snapshot of our district. Dr. Collins was mistaken, we're actually at 442 as of yesterday, but as of October 1st, right. No, I panicked when he said that. No, some of these, some of these numbers are obviously in flux because they rely on information reported last year, but fairly accurate for these purposes. Our average class size remains 12. The 91% of our 10th graders met or exceeded expectations in MCASY LA, which is a number we're very, very proud of. And in both 10th grade math and 9th grade science, 69% of the students taking the exam met or exceeded expectations. In science, that would be either physics or biology, both taken as a 9th grader. We have a, one of our strengths as a program is all of our AP offerings. We have some pretty impressive numbers in terms of the number of students taking AP exams, which is a really, really good indicator, probably more, more important indicator than the scores students get on the exams, because just taking the course itself is quite a challenge and prepares them for college study. However, 59% of our students taking AP exams scored a 3 or higher. 3 is the number. Dr. Collins?
I just wanted to point out that in the entire Commonwealth, there were only six school districts where their students scored a 90 or above in the MCASY LA, and Lennox was one of them. So I'm careful not to just contribute that to that grade, but every educator that helped students along the way.
Agreed, agreed. It is a process. The 11th and 12th grade teachers contribute quite a bit as well, but their numbers aren't captured here. Again, those AP exam grades are, a 5 is not a perfect score, but the highest score you can earn. A 3 is generally considered a score that will earn you some credit at many colleges, fewer and fewer unfortunately, but 3 is considered a qualifying score. You get a 3, a 4, a 5 on an AP, it will likely benefit you in terms of credit or advanced standing in classes in college. And as reported by the state last year, our chronic absenteeism rate was, fell. We're very proud of that, and it's listed at 12.6% now. It's not entirely clear if that's January to January or the calendar year for the district, but however it was calculated, it fell from the previous year to this, to 12.6%. Next slide, please. Our school improvement plan has four goals again this year. One of them, goal three here, is a carryover. We're still working on it, but we wanted, we left it up there. It remains very important to us. Our first goal is to strive to lower our rate of chronic absenteeism. I'll get into some detail on all these later. Our second goal, to develop standard operating procedures for all non-instructional staff, improving efficiency, minimizing the transfer of bias, most importantly, and helping with transitions. We've had a lot of those lately. The goal, it's a two-year goal, is to optimize the middle school program. We're focusing primarily on scheduling there, we'll talk about that in a second. And the fourth goal is to create a sense of belonging for all students. We're talking a lot about that district-wide, and we share it as a school improvement goal. Next slide, please. So goal one, striving to lower our rate of chronic absenteeism. This is, DESI has made it clear, they've signaled that they are going to, they haven't been specific about how they're going to do it, but they're going to make it far more important to districts what their chronic rate of absenteeism is, and it's going to go into, not your growth percentile, but your accountability rating, for example, it's going to carry much more weight. We do pretty well as a district statewide, we do pretty well as a school statewide, but it is something we're focusing on. Next slide, please.
What's the definition of chronic absenteeism?
Great question. Does anybody know? It's 10%, right? So if the school year is 180 days, chronic absenteeism is considered more than 18 days. Did I get that math right?
Yes. Just out of curiosity, with the schedule changes that we're going to make with the Thanksgiving holiday, do we have any assumptions as to how that's going to...
Wait, 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 wait.
Sorry. Good question.
Yeah, good question.
Well, sorry, one other question, just the 12% that you showed, how does that compare to pre-COVID, or how much further have we tried to go in a sense?
Dr. Collins, do you want to cross that?
We aren't where we were, I would have to look up the exact figure, but the whole state is not where it was. And as Dr. Ames has pointed out, DESI is saying they're going to change the calculation because they feel that there's become a pretty casual statewide, a casual relationship with attendance that there. And the research suggests that being in the seat is the, you know, is the best possible thing that we can be doing with students. So I can get that exact figure.
Yeah, I was just wondering, so like, we have to get from 12 down to 11, or is it, you know, 12 down to like cut it in half?
That number of 12, that 12.6 is a pretty strong statewide. Yeah, we're in pretty good shape. Everybody took a huge hit during COVID, and the recovery has been very, very slow. One of the things to point out, it's 10%, and it doesn't matter why, right? So if you were touring colleges, it doesn't matter. If you were confined to a hospital, for example, it doesn't matter. In terms of absenteeism, it's just how many days you were not in the school in that class.
Do you have anything you would attribute to it coming down from last year's 15.7 and now you're at 12? Anything measurable that you could...
A lot of people did really great work.
There you go. Were there any changes between last year and this year that you would attribute that 3% differential?
It did come down statewide.
It came down statewide. We made one change last year, we'll talk about something we're going to make moving forward. One of the changes we made last year, and it wasn't really a change, we had a policy that was not being consistently enforced, and it had to do with what we were allowing students to make up for an absence that they had told us about in advance versus an absence that just happened, right? So you have, you have, you're able to make up work, you're able to retake stuff, you're able to meet with teachers, as opposed to, I've been on a fishing trip for a week, I'm back now, can you please reteach the quadratic equation, right? There was a lot of that happening, and everybody was frustrated by it. The policy was on the books, we didn't write anything new, but we sent a letter to all of our families saying, listen, here is the policy, and moving forward, this is how it will be enforced. I think that's had an impact. I think it's had an impact. One of the things we're going to do, as an actual item on the school, is monitor attendance more carefully. We don't just, the way we have Power School set up in our systems, we don't always know why a student is out, and having that information will be really helpful. We're going to improve our communications from Power School. Just this week, we've started sending out automated calls as opposed to somebody actually personally calling. That will help a lot, communicating via text and via phone with families. We're hoping that improves things quite a bit. We have to tweak that a little bit, we've already run into some snags. Working to educate parents on the importance of regular attendance. That's, the more we talk about this as a faculty, we keep coming back to that. It's important that parents understand what that day is like when a student returns from a two- or three-day absence, and what happens to that social studies test in a kid's head if they've, if they're worried about it and worried about it and coming back to it, really helping parents understand how significant that time away can be to the child's Your question about the calendar, one of the things we hope to do is consider family travel when developing a district calendar, which we've done to some degree this year. We're going to see how it goes, but I think it's a bold move, allowing, you know, giving parents that full week to travel. We'll see, we'll see what kind of an impact it has. And finally, refining our policy regarding period attendance. Period attendance is just first period class, second period class, third period class, as opposed to daily attendance, which means you're not in the building that day. This is another example of something where we have policy on this, and we've made it very clear this year, before the year even started, that we are taking period attendance. And if you lose, we use a similar threshold, if you miss 20 days for a full year class, we'll have a meeting with you, we'll talk about why you were away, but you risk losing credit for that class until you complete a credit recovery project over the summer after the school year has ended. And that's, that's, kids are here for first period a lot more than they were last year, I'll put it that way. So that seems to be having an impact already. I'm certain you will be hearing about that policy throughout the school year on the... I'm going to stay away from the outcomes, they're really reflective of the action steps. I'll do just one or the other for each slide. Let's go on to goal two. Develop standard operating procedures for all non-instructional staff. Standard operating procedures are not job descriptions, but they stem from them. We've started doing job descriptions... We've started doing job descriptions for all of our Unit C roles. We've had a lot of turnover in the last couple of years, and I think it's really important that we have standard operating procedures for a couple of reasons that just make running a school easier. You can recruit more accurately... You can go to the next slide, please. You can recruit more accurately, you can tell people what you're really looking for, these are the tasks you would be doing. You're more likely to get qualified candidates who are applying for a job that you've, you know, they know what they're applying for. It will help with transitions significantly. The most important reason, though, is that last bullet, strive to minimize transfer of bias via process amid transitions. So if Bob here has been doing the job really well for the last 17 years, and he's hit that magic number, and he decides he's retiring, and he moves on, the way we're bound by, we only have a very, very small amount of time for training, right? So we might get a week with Bob's replacement, maybe two, right? For generous, right? So in those two weeks, without standard operating procedures, what we're basically doing is saying, "Bob, we're giving you two weeks to tell your replacement how you've done this job for the last 17 years," as opposed to thinking about the tasks we asked him to complete, the resources he uses, the policies he has to rely on, the processes, that sort of thing. And so Bob's a great guy, and he's done a great job for the last 17 years, but Bob has his biases, we all have them. And if we simply rely on his experience and rely on him telling someone how to do the job the way he did it, we're almost guaranteeing the transfer of those biases, as opposed to saying, "This is the work we're trying to do, these are the resources that it relies on, what's the best way to do this?" But without standard operating procedures, it's all up to Bob. And Bob's a great guy, but we really need to have a more objective approach to this training, and having standard operating procedures in place is a very, very good way to start. Next slide, please. I just want to make sure there's nothing on here I haven't mentioned already. No, we're good. I've covered all this. Okay, goal three, optimize the middle school program. This, again, is the second year of this, and my feeling is that we're going to have a goal that looks something like this for at least a few more years. This really has to do with how we use that additional instructional time in the middle school. It's been called personalized learning time, or PLT, it's been called the enrichment block, a couple other euphemisms for it. It's... There are four core classes in the middle school, and then they have an additional instructional period that's not an elective. It's not music, it's not band, it's not art, it's not woodshop. And we're really trying to find the best way to use that time. This is complicated by a couple of things. We're a small building, and we rely on specialists to teach both in the middle school and the high school, and so we can't simply say, "Well, let's just have a separate schedule for middle school." It's... The schedule makes it difficult, the fact that we have to share the building among middle and high school students. It's a strength, but it's also one of our limitations. So go to the next slide, please. We have formed a committee to look at the schedule, to... We're in the process of developing a survey right now. We're looking at the different models, because there are quite a few schools, we have some in the county, in fact, that do this successfully. They have a different schedule, maybe not the best schedule, certainly not something we want to adopt wholesale, but we want to look at how other schools are being successful. The third bullet there, we really want to look at that enrichment period, that fifth instructional section, how can we use that time most effectively? Where it falls, it's... This is... That enrichment period is part of our effort to offer math in the middle school five times a week, not four, as we do with other core subjects. That's a good thing, we'd like to preserve that, but it does throw a little bit of a wrench in the works scheduling-wise, so we're wrestling with that. We're meeting as a full faculty tomorrow afternoon to get some general ideas for the survey that we'll be working on for our next two meetings with the scheduling committee, gather some information from faculty, and hopefully make some progress on this later in the fall before we start our scheduling for next year. Next slide, please. Let me skip the outcomes. And finally, create a sense of belonging for all students. This is something we're doing district-wide, no doubt you've heard about this, but this will foster a culture in which every student feels like they belong, which in turn promotes higher levels of engagement, student well-being, and greater academic success. You could skip two slides to look at the outcomes. So we're thinking about, for example, putting some numbers behind this. We want to expand our No Place for Hate initiative by maybe 50%, grow it, right? Do twice as many projects, add by 50%. We want to create a fan base for our Unified Basketball Team, which has just been a huge success. If you haven't been to a Unified game yet, please get to a Unified basketball game, it's really just a fantastic experience. We want to expand that and have more of a presence with Special Olympics, and there's been talk of creating a Unified Track and Field Team. We have that option in the county, there are others, yeah. We're talking about quarterly welcome events for new parents of the district, because we do get, you know, that the difference between 440 and 442 is, you know, we have people that come in in the middle of the year, in the middle of the quarter. We do our best to welcome them, make them feel comfortable with the transition, but we could do a better job. We could have a new student buddy system, for example. And the last bullet there, we've talked a lot about including a student on the school council, and instead of just begging students to do this, maybe give them credit for it, right? So we'll give you, you know, a credit or two for, I mean, we give them a credit for marketing class, for sociology class. I think this experience and the time spent would be at least as significant. Good. So those are some of the steps we're hoping to take this year on that front. And the last slide is just a shout-out to my school council there, a fantastic bunch there, very, very patient with me in all ways. I'm so grateful for their contributions and the time they put in. That's all I got.
Because there have been students out in the past, I think you just find that students are just very committed to lots of different things, it's hard to...
It's a big ask, yeah, it's a big ask, and so we've talked about maybe dividing the work a little bit, so it's, you know, maybe you work for half a year, maybe a quarter, and there's some overlap, so they have a transition, and then somebody else serves for a little while. I think offering them some credit might help, just because it's just one less thing they'll, you know, get some a study hall essentially, right? They'll have some time during the school day that they can work on something, they won't have to take an elective class. It is a big ask. It is a big ask, yeah.
Next is Brenda Kelly with Morris School Improvement Plan.
I need my glasses tonight so I can see. Good evening, members of the school committee, Dr. Collins, and members of the viewing community. It is with great pride that I present the Morris Elementary School Improvement Plan. As principal, I'm honored to share the steps we are taking to ensure that Morris continues to be a school where we're sure every student has the opportunity to thrive academically, socially, and emotionally. Our mission at Morris is clear, we are committed to provide a wide continuum of learning opportunities that value each individual, maximize skills and knowledge, and support students in achieving their potential. Ultimately, we strive to create lifelong learners who will contribute positively to a diverse community. Can you just go to the next slide? This school improvement plan is a roadmap that outlines our efforts to meet this mission. As we look at our student body of 334 now, students ranging from pre-kindergarten through 5th grade, we are seeing positive trends in student achievement, yet we know there's always room for growth. With a class size averaging between 15 and 20, we are fortunate to have a community that supports small group instruction and individualized attention. We serve 21 English learners, 40 students with IEP's Individual Education Plans, 49 ELA Title I students, 34 Math Title I students. These numbers highlight the diversity of learners at Morris, and it is our goal to ensure that every student, no matter their background or ability, feel supported and able to achieve success. In terms of academic performance, our 2024 MCAS data showcases the hard work of both students and staff. We are particularly proud that our 3rd, 4th, and 5th graders consistently exceed the state's average in both math and ELA, demonstrating Morris's commitment to high-quality instruction. For example, 84% of our 4th graders met or exceeded expectations on the Math MCAS compared to 46 state level. That's double. These achievements reflect the dedication of our teachers, who strive to provide innovative, evidence-based instruction that challenges and engages our students. Beyond academics, we are focused on the social-emotional well-being of our students. We understand that many of our youngest learners, particularly those in kindergarten through 2nd grade, need additional support to regulate their emotions and behaviors. Some of these students have faced trauma, and we are committed to providing interventions that foster emotional safety and resilience. We are proud of our Positive Behavior Interventions and Supports, PBIS framework, which continues to grow stronger each year. By promoting positive behavior and fostering strong student-staff relationships, we are creating an inclusive environment where all students feel valued. As you heard from my counterpart, Mr. Ames, chronic absenteeism is another area we've been focusing on improving. We saw significant progress last year, scoring four out of four points in our chronic absenteeism, which is marked improvement from previous years. However, we continue to monitor and address these issues by engaging with families and emphasizing the importance of regular attendance. Our school improvement plan identifies three priority areas. Next slide. The first priority area is, we will enhance our use of curricular materials to promote inclusive, culturally-sustaining, and evidence-based instruction. By June of 2025, each grade level will adopt at least two diverse texts for shared read-alouds. We believe this approach will not only engage our students in meaningful ways, but also foster a deeper understanding of diversity and inclusion. Next slide. Priority area number two, we will strengthen our PBIS framework, ensuring that all staff are trained in Tier 1 strategies that support a positive learning environment. This includes reteaching expectations throughout the year, implementing the second-step social-emotional curriculum, and using restorative conversations to address behavior concerns. These steps will help create a stronger sense of belonging for all our students. Next slide. Priority area number three, family engagement. We recognize the importance of family involvement in student success. Our plan includes creating an attendance committee to address chronic absenteeism, increasing family engagement activities, and collaborating with families on programs like Odyssey of the Mind, and coordinating activities with members of the Wellness Committee during Screen Free Week in May. We will be also gathering family input on how to enhance cultural awareness and inclusivity through suggestion boxes and ongoing conversations. Our school improvement plan is not static, it is a living document that will evolve as we continue to assess and meet the needs of our school, of our students and community. I want to thank the members of Morris's leadership team and the school council for their work in creating this document. By working collaboratively with staff, families, and community partners, we will build on the strong foundation that already exists at Morris. Thank you for your continued support. Is there any questions?
There was a recent major study about the impact of principals on student achievement, and it reinforced all of the studies that have come before it, that the principals, the biggest impact comes from teachers with students, and the second-biggest impact comes from the principals, and that impact is very significant. So I think as you can see, both of our principals look, collaborate, and work really diligently to try to make sure that we are offering the best programs that we can offer, and I am thankful for both of them.
Thank you.
The next item is the climate survey update. On Friday, the admin team participated in training from Panorama. Panorama is used by a number of schools and school districts, not just across the Commonwealth, but across the country. And you'll recall, when I came in last year, we wanted to... You can't change what you can't measure, so we wanted to get a climate survey out, perception of students, staff, and families, and so the principals and I came together, and we used Survey Monkey to develop our own tool. It, quite frankly, at the end, it had some limitations and some flaws, and we're adopting this new tool, Panorama, which will nationally norm our results. It has a myriad of features, but one of the things is that there are dozens and dozens and dozens of questions, specific surveys that we can pull from, and if we use those, again, we can nationally norm, how does our staff, how does our student, how do our families compare to those answering across the state? We can also dice and slice that data to say, how do our female students respond compared to female students or male students, or what have you, a whole bunch of demographic categories that we can use. So we're really excited about this tool. I know that some of our administrators who had worked in Pittsfield previously had experience with it, and we're very excited to see us be able to bring that on. So we are... We've had our first introductory training, we've got a couple more coming. Then we're going to put into the field our fall climate survey. One of the other things it'll do is it will automatically, for every question, show the delta or the difference between how folks answered in the fall and how they answer in the spring. Are we moving the needle? Are we going in the right direction with our efforts? So we feel that this is a really good step forward. It'll also, down the road, be able to tie into a number of things that teachers can do, and we believe that it's going to be able to interface with Power School, which will, if that turns out to be the case, will make it even more powerful for us.
Will this be the second run-through or the first?
This will be the... So we did one last year, we did our Survey Monkey, fall and spring, and this will be our first.
First Panorama.
Yeah, we'll do a fall, and then have a spring using the Panorama tool. All right, that's everything I have.
Very good, thank you. School building committee update. I guess there were meetings last week, wanted to hear from, in some combination, those of you therefore involved, what they missed.
I missed that one.
Yeah, so feasibility study had come back in, and we started evaluating some of that, that led to some additional questions, and also beginning to talk about bringing more information and bringing the public involved. There's been some discussions about holding, you know, Q&amp;A session along with a presentation, and we're also, believe we're going to invite the community to come in and see some of these areas that do require our immediate attention. We're going to be moving along with these, probably expecting the next steps of the building process, you know, not until probably the special meeting in May, I believe.
Regular meeting?
Regular meeting, yeah, yeah. The second annual meeting.
Okay. Where the proposals are, the feasibility is now versus May, are there, is it mostly a matter of getting more input for refining the existing proposal? What are the kind of pieces up for?
Exactly, just due diligence and, you know, making sure that we know exactly what we're looking at, and of course, we also want to get some more of the public feedback as well.
The new town manager, get him up to speed. That's a big piece of it. Seems a little unfair to spring something on him, now that he's just been selected.
All right.
Who will get notified at the, I mean, not, even though I'm not on the committee and I could come to anything, but the public meeting would be a good chance for some of us that aren't on the committee to join in and check it out. Great. I mean, I have some knowledge, but it's good to kind of be part of the process with the public.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Policy Section J, the, I guess, is the penultimate of all the sections, and I believe the largest. It's about one hundred eighty pages long. So, you all have the...
Thank you for that late reading.
What's that?
Thank you for that late reading, Bill.
You have both the old compared to the new and the new final. Just one note relative, we hadn't correctly changed parent to parent guardian everywhere in the new final, so gone ahead and still updated that. So, we would be voting on a version that has that updated everywhere. And then, I think, as I, in our sort of index, we have places where in the process was also identified, still have other policy work we might need to do. But if there are comments, questions, and so forth, we can hit those here, and then hopefully move on to Section I, which will be the final one.
I'll give a shout-out to the committee that did the review, because that was a very thorough review, and we did it. Appreciate that.
I appreciated the presentation.
Yep.
It was a quick little thing to go through. It was immediately much, much easier. I really appreciate that. I appreciate the communication as well.
I especially appreciate the eye towards removing sections that were irrelevant toward that. We don't need to carry on, some of that stuff. So, that was very good. I didn't have any substantive comments.
Yeah, I had quite a few, and unfortunately, I apologize to Orin because I started doing this last week because he gave us enough lead time, and then I got super busy and didn't get to finish it till late last night. So, I thought it was really great, too. I think one of the things that was a little bit, and I would have taken the time last week to talk to Amy about it and kind of get it cleaned up, is that the way that we handle the wording about school choice versus the way it's done, I'm concerned a little bit. We did a lot of work around the dates and the timelines the last time we revised it based upon the protocol that Amy so wonderfully kept in place through many transitions. Some of the wording in here relates to things like rolling admission, and it doesn't really include the information about how we waitlist and what happens if you are on the waitlist and how that works. I think it's important that we get it exactly how Amy and Dr. Collins do it, because I think that's one of the areas where people outside of the district are looking very closely. When people talk to me about choice, I give them the heads-up that the information is there. So, I'm asking for the indulgence of the committee to table just JFBB, which relates to that, so that I could have a minute, because, I mean, in fairness, I didn't even have a chance to talk to Amy about it, to just make some suggestions either together with Amy or with Orin and David and Bill, just because I think we just need to tighten up what actually happens, and then adopt that later, if that would be okay. Because I feel like there's just enough places that the terminology might get confusing. If you say, wait, wait a minute, I'm on the waitlist, but what number? They have a great policy protocol around making sure that the waitlist, and I'm looking my, sorry about my back to you, about how the waitlist is done fairly and with an unbiased manner, and how we give people numbers. And I just really think, you know, even if it doesn't have to have like every single step, that the policy should reflect that. And it was just one of those things that I think we tightened up the dates, the dates are reflected accurately, but that process of rolling admission and waitlisting and stuff isn't really, you know. So, would that, if you would indulge me in a motion to just table JFBB, we could clean that up, and I think that would probably be a pretty easy approval next time, but I don't think we should approve it the way it is, because I do think that people start to look at this very soon for their enrolling their students. In fact, I was just talking to some people about it recently, and suggesting that they take a look and get ready for their process for the early grades, so.
We have probably forty applications for choice for next year already.
Yeah, so, right. So, I think, would that be okay, if we just check in? Because I just think it doesn't...
We did a little bit without completely overhauled. We said if there are still spots, or if not all spots are filled in the first round, the following will exist, because it was, I think, too much in terms of superintendent didn't want to do a math at all, so.
Yeah, so we, I think we'll... If, I'll do a motion to table, if anybody's willing to agree.
Well, and it's, we don't have a motion yet, so it'll, it's JFBBR, because it's all of the detailed regulations for it, I think, is where the, all the detail is.
Choice information and application admissions process.
Yeah, I think you're right. Okay. Because I was, it's the JFBBR. That has more to do with the...
JFBB.
The waitlist and all of that.
Right, exactly. So, yeah, if the motion is just to approve withholding JFBBR, then vote on that. And of course, what we have remains in force until we update it, but that'll still leave it as it to do for the next meeting, and then we can just bring that back.
And there were a few other things, again, that Orin said, you know, really are more about just cleaning up language. You know, this big of an overhaul, there's just some things that I found that I sent in a, you know, suggested changes, but I don't think they're big enough to need to hold up the vote on the rest of it.
Yeah, and I think, you know, as we, even back when we were doing A back in the day, I think we all recognized, these are basically wholesale, keep the old one or pick the new one. They by no means foreclose than any specific policy you want to take a look at, or we can do, but at least the entire pack will be the new pack, and we can then come back to anything.
All right. So, based on that, I would make a motion to approve the revised, edited and revised policy known as J, except for the policy JFBBR.
Second.
Who is second? Mike?
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Thank you. We are on the home stretch.
Unless you and David want to take it back, or I'll offer to work on that with Amy and some...
Yeah, I'll follow up with you. If you can sync up with her on what it want, we'll just get it slotted in, and then all of the document will be in one place. Then, I believe the last thing we have, as we surge into budget season any day now, the most wonderful time of the year, ask Melissa just to prepare a little extra in addition to the timeline, just on some of the details that we're always asking about every year, on what do all these things actually mean? So, she has very graciously put some extra time into that, and we'll run through that quickly, and as well as the timeline, and an excellent time for questions if there are any.
So, you know, the budget process is months-long, and we start it in just a few weeks, early November. But I thought, once Orin said, you know, we should really sort of give an overview of the process and terms, and it was a great idea, because we say all this stuff while we're in these meetings, and I want to make sure we're all on the same page. So, key terms that we want to keep in mind, the gross operating budget is the total amount of operating costs prior to the application of any revenue funds, special revenue funds, which, once you apply the special revenue, the next level is the net operating budget, and that's what goes to the town meeting for appropriation. How we do that is through special revenue funds. We reduce the gross by those funds that are listed there, and the amounts vary year-to-year. But the biggest one that we use is the school choice fund, and then circuit breaker, and then tuition accounts, and then the two local fundings. So, operating budget includes day-to-day expenses. What are those? That's what it costs us to run the district every day, every quarter, every year, just the daily expenses. So, we have salaries, benefits, services, supplies, utilities, transportation, and of course, you know, maintenance of buildings and so on. Special revenues, as I mentioned. State revenues are the school choice revenue, and this year, we are anticipating one point seven million from the state in new revenue, which will be applied in the FY26 budget, a portion thereof. And the circuit breaker reimbursement revenue, which is revenue based upon costs above a threshold of about fifty-two thousand dollars for special ed expenses. So, if we have a outplacement or transportation, anything above that fifty-two thousand is reimbursed at, they plan for seventy-five percent, and it has been the last few years, but sometimes it dips down into the sixty percent range. Local revenues are use of facilities. Someone wants to rent the gym at Morris, there's a rental fee for outside entities, that goes in the use of facilities fund. Someone rents the theater, same thing, and then tuition for pre-K in Richmond students all go into a fund that we use, and a lot of these are ninety-nine point nine percent used to offset salaries. In addition to those, the state receives, the town receives state aid, which is called Chapter Seventy-eight, and Medicaid reimbursement, which is a reimbursement formula for services for students who qualify for Medicaid. But those go directly to the town. Chapter Seventy is at one point three nine five estimated for FY25, which is based upon the number of students who live in the town regardless of where they go to school, and that's four hundred and eighty-two this year. School choice receiving tuition goes to the school department, that's the one point seven number, three hundred and thirteen as of June thirty. That number's different now, I'm sure. So, all in from the state, three point one seven four for tuition type reimbursement.
The Chapter Seventy money, when we talk about, let's say, we have a fifteen million-dollar budget that we're going to the town to appropriate. The town appropriates that. The town also gets the one point three from the state, but we never sort of subtract that from the fifteen. That just goes straight to town operating.
Right, because it goes directly to the town. The town uses it probably to offset the appropriation to the taxpayers, but that, we don't even see, goes directly to the town. We're also assessed in the same way. School choice sending kids that go out of district to another public school via the choice model, we have twenty-eight point eight. Point eight most likely is because of services provided, but that's as of June thirty, twenty-four. And this assessment, we, the school department receives the revenues, the town is assessed. So, the town sees this come off of their reimbursements from the state. In addition, there's vocational tuition that the town pays for, and the school department pays for the transportation of those vocational students, an agreement that we have with So, school choice, as I said, is the largest revolving fund that we use, and a couple of key items with the school choice funding. There's no restrictions on the fund balance. You don't have to use it to offset taxpayer, the appropriation amount requested. There's no time limit on spending, and you can really use it for anything. We use it to offset salaries. So, the way that it works is, we have a fund balance at the end of the year. That fund balance is used to offset the current budget we're in. We receive revenues in during this year. We don't touch them, and then end of year balance is used to offset the twenty-six budget, so it's a cycle of two years. Circuit breaker, same sort of cycle, but we must spend this at the end of year two. So, we receive revenue in year one, we can spend it year one, or we could spend it partly year one, partly year two, or we can, budgeting, I think it makes more sense to get some money in, know what's in the bank, so to speak, and then allocate the funding to offset some of the special ed expenses. But we have to use it by the end of year two. If we don't expend it all, what's remaining goes to the general fund of the town. The state doesn't get it back, but it goes to the town, to their free cash fund.
On your previous one on school choice, one of the questions that I get asked is, hey, what if a student comes in either with special education needs or they're determined that they need them once they're here? Couldn't that wipe out the whole school choice fund if they had to be out of district residential placement or something? And that isn't the case?
No, there's laws about in district, and when they come in district, and who has to, what district is responsible at certain points of the year. We also submit reports during the course of the year, and so in December, that one point seven may be one point six or one point eight, depending on what's occurred in the last few months of the fall.
So, in the same way that we have those students going out in the point eight because of, perhaps because of services, the sending district is compensating us for service, special education services?
Yes, so the base... School choice, no additional services, five thousand dollars per student. But if a student requires services, we include that when we report it to the state. The state assesses the sending town for those services. So, you could have a student, five thousand plus, fifteen thousand in services, twenty thousand. So, it doesn't, that's why the numbers don't always equally divide by, the total doesn't divide by five thousand and come to the number we have.
There's another formula for, that I have to do for any students with special ed services, that's called the school of choice special education increments. There's school of choice increments, and so we get a certain amount of money back on any student who comes here. I have to do the formulas, just much like the circuit breaker formula that we get for our old in-district students, and that's how they calculate the money and reimbursements that we get per child, based on the amount of services. So, we actually make sure that we keep a good track of like how those services are delivered, because there's sort of formulas and ways in which that happens, whether it's an individual or a group service, how much time it is that we can bill back for, and it's another one of those where you figure out with the formula how much you get for reimbursement.
Each service and its average for the state.
Yeah, so there's a formula for that. There's also, it's a really different thing if somebody has to, you have to invite the sending district if you're ever considering outplacement. They have to be part of that decision, because they're assessed for that fee of sending a student out. So, anytime that you're actually thinking about sending a student out of district for placements, you have to invite that sending district to your team.
When we were doing this year's budget last year, we were anticipating a significant increase in special education costs. We didn't yet have circuit breaker money to apply, but essentially, this year, as we incur those costs, we're also incurring circuit breaker revenue into our fund, and so when we look at the budget you're preparing this year for next year, we will essentially apply those funds that are coming in relative to the cost this year.
Yes, so for the, everyone was here last year, I think, except for Bob, but you probably know this, the town provided three hundred thousand out of free cash in addition to what we requested for appropriation, so it knocked it down from what, for what the taxpayers were assessed, and that was due to increasing special ed costs. So, when that happens in the course of a year, you, Brian and Michelle, work on those reports, and we get extraordinary relief if we're over a certain threshold. And we get extraordinary relief if we're over a certain threshold. And you can spend it either in the year that you get it or in the next year. Or you, but it has to be done in the next year if you don't use any this year. So we did use some last year because the expenses were so high, they just all changed mid-year. Um, so we did use some last year and we are building up the, the fund for next year. And you'll see that the, the revenue we use is higher to offset the special ed expenses. Go down. Oh, no, go up. Sorry. I feel like I'm gonna sing. Um, revolving funds. When I first started in this type of work, someone said to me, it's a checking account. Think of it that way because you have money, you don't have to spend it, but you do spend it. And you just have to report your expenditures year over year and the fund carries on as long as it's got a positive balance. So our revolving funds that are local are the, um, as I said, the use of facilities, the Duffin Theater, um, tuition accounts. But every one of those has to be used in the area that you collected the funds in. So Duffin, you have to use it for, typically we use it for custodial overtime, theater manager time. Um, that is paid for by the facility renting, the entity renting the space. Um, the same with use of facilities. That's a little broader because you have a whole building that you can use it on. Um, and tuitions can only be spent on where the students are. So for Richmond tuition, it's used to offset salaries at the high school level. And for the pre-K, it's used solely in the pre-K department. Some to offset salaries and some for field trips, supplies, things of that nature. But you have to stay within the arena of what you collected the money in. In addition to the operating budget, which is what is voted on during the course of this cycle, we have grant funded. We have grant funds as well. And they fund quite a bit of expenditures, close to 500,000. So we have title one, which is reading and math services at the elementary level. And we support 1.3 FTEs with that. We pay stipends for professional development. We pay stipends for curriculum work out of some of these, um, special ed needs, supplies, professional development, development and transportation. But that's all in addition to the gross budget that is operating. These are operating expenses, completely different fund.
And so they don't show up in the gross budget?
No.
Never show up in the budget at all?
They don't show up in the budget at all. So when you're looking at total costs for the district, it's gross operating plus grants, plus any free cash that for, like last year, the, the town did apply. That is the total cost to run it. So, um, this is almost 500,000 that we typically get in any given year. I think this year the allocation is 486. And that's in addition to what we talk about in the operating budget. You'll see FTEs because you vote on FTEs in the budget. But you won't see a dollar application or allocation for those.
And so if we're looking in the budget, how much?
We're spending on PD, let's say, that's less than we actually spend on PD essentially?
Yes, we receive a grant, um, it's title two and it's for teacher development. And we use it mostly for, um, some mentoring this year, but not much. We put that in the operating budget for this year, um, professional development for sta- instructional staff. So now we'll move to expenses. In order to keep the management of the budget where it needs to be, we have cost centers. And those cost centers are basically every major program within the operating budget. We have Morris Elementary School as one, LM MHS as one, special education as one. Those are the instructional departments. And they're the, they're, that's where the money is because that's where instructional is. And you'll see even within their own operating breakdown, instructional expenses are where the money is mostly applied. Technology supports district wide, central admin supports district wide, operations and maintenance, two buildings, one cost center. And we'll just, uh, flip through these. You can look at these after. But this is broken out by program area within the budget. And for fiscal year '25, the percentages of each program area within the pro- the cost center itself.
So where's the pre-K program showing up in there?
Special ed. Under instructional.
My call is inappropriate to you?
Yes, you're doing great. And over in the corner on the left, you can see that the FY 25 budget totals are listed there. So 5% of central admin, 5% of 991, school committee, 67% administration. That's not just salaries though. That includes if we have any professional development in our lines, services, supplies, things of that nature. Salaries are in there, but not the whole budget. And then benefits and contingency, um, this is, uh, we have the operating budget expenses. Then I typically put benefits below. It gets added in and then we subtract the special revenue. They are, the contingency fund that we have is about 3% of the total budget. And the active and retirees are 97% of, I'm sorry, the contingency budget. And active and retirees are 97% of that for benefits. We are looking at most likely 11 to 12% increase in benefits for next year. So that's something that's on the radar. I'd like to start higher, like at 12%. They vote, the board votes at the end of January. So by then, well, I'll have an exact number, but I'd rather start a little bit, a little bit higher and get where we need to get at the end so that we're not going the other way. It just is a little.
And which board is that?
Berkshire Health Group. There was a large increase in the medex plan for retirees this year.
Cause I remember that, we don't really have any control. Let's just put the board's.
We have a vote. But if you're not in the majority.
Right.
You know, um, they're, I think that they manage benefits well. I think what they're up against is a change in the environment. There's more doctor visits, there's more pharmacy expenses. And that's all been reworked in some areas, um, for costs, but it's, it's higher than it was. And the board had about $15 million in reserve. They had a $7 million loss last year. So they're down to about, it's not quite 15 minus 7 equals 8. I think they have about 7 million left in their reserve. So that's a low number and that's a scary number to not have, to have as your reserve when you're looking at that big of a realm. So I think that when claims are higher than premiums and your reserve is down to the lowest you want it to be, the only place you have to go to are premiums. And I think that that's where they are right now. So we'll see. I'm, I'm the alternate now on the board. So I, I had the benefit of going to the meeting about a month ago. Um, and it was nice because I used to sit on it at my other district. So it was like homecoming for me. But, um, the vote for the increase in medex, I think was the right one, unfortunately.
Sorry, Melissa, just back on the, on the reserve fund. This, so for the current year, it's something like 100,000. When, when we see it come around this year's budget, it will be significantly higher because we're negotiating unit A. And so we don't, we can't budget a new salary increase before the contract is settled. Instead, there's a placeholder pending?
Yes, so, thank you. I was going to mention that, that some years you have a low amount. And this year, we had the benefit of having all settled contracts. So we knew exactly where people were moving to, except for those with individual contracts. They're negotiated in the spring. So there's always reserve money for those. And we reserve some money for special ed expenses as well, just in case. Because you, you just don't know, it, it changes. I've never, I've never had a budget approved and it stay the same. Usually within a week, something changes that was approved. But, um, so you have to have some reserve, but within a reasonable amount. And in a negotiation year, if we're not settled, the reserve will be much higher. So this is the gross operating budget, um, which is at 19.174. That's, um, exclusive of about 500,000 in grants. Exclusive of 300,000 from the town from free cash. So all in, you're looking at about 20 million to run the district from various sources of revenue. The biggest, of course, is personnel salaries and benefits together, 84%. The rest, um, supplies, conference, other expenses, contingency. This is based on FY 25. So you'll see that that's, uh, 16% of the total 19 million. But the majority is salaries and benefits. We're a service organization really. And that's where all the expenses lie. So going back to gross versus net thinking, this is an example, this is our numbers from this fiscal budget. Gross operating of 19.1 minus total special revenues, school choice, circuit breaker, local tuitions, local, um, use of facilities, et cetera, 2.3 million. Minus town free cash of 300,000 equals the net appropriation request that was on the town meeting warrant of 16855355. So that's how we get there. We start with the big number, figure out what revenues we can apply, see where we sit. Um, if we need more, we talk to the town manager. But usually gross minus special revenues, we're in a good spot. FY 25 was a tough budget as far as expenses. Um, so, you know, we won't always see the town free cash is what I'm saying. You know, hopefully it's gross operating minus special revenues equals our net. And then after all that, we have another budget, which is capital. And capital is, um, an amount that the town determines and appropriates it at the town meeting. And we use it for repair, replacement of buildings, boilers, carpeting, vans, trucks, safety upgrades. Um, typically the purchases need to be over 5,000. That's usually my base that I use. And lasts for a long time. That determines whether or not it's capital or operating. And, um, this is in, in addition to the 19.1 or 20 million with the other revenues. And in the last few years, it's been 400,000. So probably for the last three or four, except during COVID, it, we didn't need it. Nobody was here. So we didn't use it. We should have probably, that was a good time to use it. Yeah. Oh, yeah. And Essar did, yes. And they're gone. We've spent all of those. Um, and the final report is being done in the next month or so.
It's officially over then, when the final Essar?
Uh, I couldn't wait for that day. But it's done and I think we were, we were, we were, we were good with the funding. We, we used it for what we needed and didn't put pressure on future budgets with what we chose to use it on. So it, it was, it was nice to have and I think we did it in the right way.
There was a recent report, I, I think it was, uh, over 50% of districts were now, didn't do that? In the same way that, that you had budgeted, um, we're, we're now facing layoffs or significant budget cuts.
Well, and Lennox received 893,000. Some of those schools received millions, millions. I don't know what else you spend it on unless you buy a new building and staff. And then you're stuck after it's all gone because it's a temporary source. So, um, it's done. Good. I'm glad. I'll put it on the website under 26 budget information. So that, um, because I know once we start, it's just you start getting all the presentations and we don't take the time to go through everything. So thank you for suggesting it. Yeah. Yeah.
Thank you, Melissa. This was great.
Thank you.
We've arrived at the end. Any other business?
Well, sure. I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye, and thank you. Thank you all. Thank you for all of the presentations.